To our really first big meeting of the new building and everything, and we're delighted to see, you know, people here in the people's house. First order of business going forward is something I requested. You know, a number of folks have a legitimate concern about crime. You know, it's going on nationally, it's going on within our region. And, you know, we just want to let you know that we have been very, very proactive about what we've been doing. The first order of business is that the mayors have gotten together in the 757, and we're conducting a series of meetings. You know, a quick update about that is, you know, we have, we are working on putting together a dashboard, collecting data right now. The city managers are working on, you know, with each other collaboratively along with the police chiefs. And, you know, trying, you know, we're putting together practices of each political, each police department that we have that may benefit the other, you know, cities in the region. These meetings are ongoing, but once again, you know, we will be moving in that right direction. But the other thing is locally, we have a task force going, and Vice Mayor Wilson is heading that up. And we have been working proactively. You know, the fact of the matter is, you know, we can't control what goes on nationally or even regionally, but we have a lot of say about and what we can do locally. So at times, we're going to get periodic, you know, updates, just so people in the city know what we are doing and why, and hopefully coming up with those solutions that will not only benefit Virginia Beach, but will be the template going forward on what we can do with the Commonwealth and who knows, you know, perhaps this nation. We're pleased and honored to have former police chief Jim Severa come and chat with us. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. Duhany, Mr. Stiles, thank you for having me here to give a brief update as to what we've, what we have been working on so far for the mayor's task force. The original term was youth violence. We looked at that and we said legally, youth violence means anybody under the age of 18. And we really wrestled with that. We know violent or crime prone age goes beyond the age of 18. It goes to about 26 to 28. So we've kind of expanded our look a little bit. And the other thing is, to be very honest, once somebody turns 18, the light doesn't necessarily go on and suddenly value systems change. So we looked at that, that first. My co-chair, Pastor Michael Daniels, is not here today. He's, he's out of town. And he graciously accepted coming onboard as a co-chair. And, and you know, we've worked with Pastor Daniels and Enoch Baptist Church for decades. And I don't think there's anyone that we can consider more of a stalwart in the western Bayside area of our city than Enoch Baptist and Michael Daniels. So I am so happy that he decided that he would take this on, even though he's recently retired. And he's let me know on a couple of occasions, Jim, I'm retired now. So as we have these meetings, he's, he's still working through all of this. We started to bring a group together and we decided to look at key department directors in our city. Sooner or later, this has to, even though I'm going to get to the importance of the community in a lot of these issues, it is eventually going to become city-directed department directors working through a myriad of programs to try and interact with young people when it comes to antisocial behavior, criminal behavior, and violent criminal behavior. The first thing that we looked at was, why are we doing this? And we had a great discussion. Most people say, well, we want to, well, we're crime. We want to reduce especially violent criminal activity. No, that's what we are going to do. We honed in on the why, we're going to build a better city. And I think that's what we've looked at, what you've looked at for, for the decades I worked for the city. Why are you here? You want to build a better city. So as we're looking at this, we realize the importance of safety and security for our citizens, and we are going to build a better city. We brought various department directors together, and obviously, police, Commonwealth attorney, were, were on the top of the list because they will be your short-term solutions to a lot of these, these problems, and as well as our, our colleagues in the sheriff's department. We also brought in folks from human services, schools, parks and recreation, juvenile intake and detention. Nobody knows youth issues better than they do. We brought in the director of libraries and folks from the city manager's office, all to sit together and began, and begin to have a conversation to identify the problem and then hopefully potential solutions. All of the directors immediately said they want everyone to know where they are now. So each director did a very brief presentation of all the programs that we have going on in the city right now. And I'm going to be very honest, we have programs way above and beyond what a lot of the country is looking at. I have had the opportunity for the last two years to travel the country and, and various teaching assignments, and our city is way ahead of the curve. That doesn't mean that we rest on our laurels, nor does it mean that we stop going forward. But when I, when we look at some of the programs and projects we already have in place, just to give you an idea, most cities would love to have the number of recreation centers, full recreation centers that we have in our city to give youth something else to do rather than quote, hang out on a street corner. So all the directors came in and they gave fantastic presentations. And then the beautiful thing was they then began to talk to each other as to how they could take some of these initiatives that they're doing and combine them together. So that is the next step for our department directors. They're going to have some conversations with each other and say, how can my project or my program interact with yours, assist in it, and that we could coalesce all of these different things we're doing into one seamless move forward to address the problem. As the directors are doing that, Pastor Daniels and I are going to now take the second step. We're going to begin to meet with the community. The Virginia Beach community is, again, way ahead of the curve when it comes to wanting safety and security in, in our city. So Pastor Daniels and I talked, and we are going to do what you could basically call a roadshow. We want to go out into the community. We want to talk to people. We want to hear what their perceptions are, hear what they think we, the city, can be doing better. But most importantly, we are then going to ask them, okay, how will your group, your individuals, come onboard with these programs? Because without citizen support, we will never attain anything. And that, that was a George Washington comment. With citizen support, you will attain greatness. Without citizen support, you will obtain nothing. So we are going to work with our, with our citizens. Bottom line in wanting to work with our citizens is this problem is not a police prosecution problem, nor is it strictly schools, nor is it strictly what the libraries can do. It's a concerted effort of all of our citizens. I, I get very excited, I guess, for any, lack of any other word, when we talk about some of the successes that we had in the Lake Edward, Northridge area, and we had successes in the Holland Road, Lynn Haven Parkway corridors. And we did this because the citizens came onboard with what the city was doing. Couple of things, though, that, that we need to kind of get on the table very quickly. The mayor alluded to it. This issue is not specific to our city, or to our region, or to our state. It's nationwide. And it's really increased in the last couple of years. And remember, people involved in criminal activity do not obey geographic boundaries. In other words, they don't obey the military highway, Newtown Road, or the Chesapeake Bay Bridge tunnels. So we have those other issues that we have to deal with, and, and we know that very greatly in our city. Also, there's no one-stop shopping solution. There's no perfect formula. I know that everyone on, on the deus has studied physics, and you know that the, the mass of an object times the acceleration of the object equals the force of the object, the kinetic energy. We know that. We could plug the numbers in and come out with an exact formula. There's no formula to antisocial behavior disorder or criminal behavior. We know we have five social institutions that start with family, neighborhood, schools, work, and faith. We also know that we have individual issues that have to do with not just mental illness, but other individuals such as self, self-directed decision-making, which may be antisocial decision-making. And we also know that there's a lot of other theories that go out there for social theory, such as modeling theory and attachment theory, strain theory. And if you take all of this and put it in a bowl, the solution to a social problem is usually a lot of mush. And what we have to do is get into the mush and take what we think can best help our city. So we will come back before council, about mid-September, with a lot of specifics as to what all of your departments are doing and how they're going to begin to work together to see if they could coalesce a lot of our, our projects and programs into a seamless effort. We hope then to come back sometime in the fall with some initial recommendations and then move on from there. In closing, I just would say that what we, we look at across the country is, this is not a one and done. There is no, we're going to do this and suddenly everything's going to be beautiful. We know that with social issues, it's never a one and done. And I must say that we have this, we've always had the support of our citizens. We know that we have the support of our elected officials. And we, and, and after watching again, the department directors, I could see nothing but great support from department directors for each other to move forward on this. So Mr. Duhany, you've, you've got some great staff members who are looking to move forward on this, sir. I'm open for any questions?
Thank you. Anybody on the right with any questions or concerns? Anybody on the left? You know, but, you know, once again, thank you. And once again, we'll be looking forward to another briefing coming up in September.
September.
You know, to let people know that we're doing, I think, well, yeah. Rosemary?
Sorry. We have all these new things, gadgets to get used to as well. I just want to compliment Chief Severa and Pastor Daniels and this entire group. They have come together, worked beautifully. Everybody is on the same page as far as their goals and, and as far as we, you know, trying to get to a better place for, for your commission, Mr. Mayor. But it really makes you realize how great our staff is in the city and the wonderful things that they're doing in each of their departments. And it's, it's really amazing. And they've got, they've also got some really good ideas bubbling up that they're going to be coming forth with in the not-too-distant future. And of course, you know, you know what they come to us for, they always need some, some extra money. But hopefully, they'll be, you know, early enough so that we can start planning it with our budget season. But Jim has, he's really had this in his heart. He had this when I first met him back in 1996 of helping our young people. And I met him on the city hall steps when I was running for the school board, and that hasn't changed. Thank you so much for what you're doing. We really appreciate your efforts.
Ms. Vice Mayor, you mentioned the group. It's the group that's really moving forward. But when you mentioned that, that program we put together, the schools, they are now going to take it to the next step. What they're looking at is, is an entire system built around if a kid, if a, I'm sorry, if a student has some kind of substance abuse issue. So they want to take it to the next level. Can I give a quick example of where some of the departments are heading? Mike is sitting in the back from Director of Parks and Rec. They're sending a team out tomorrow with the police lieutenant, Carlos Sanier, fantastic police lieutenant, to Los Angeles. They have a program in Los Angeles called Saturday Night Lights, where they go to neighborhood parks a couple of days a week, three or four days a week, and they have all summer neighborhood park programs to give the, the youth of that area something to do other than get involved in what we call antisocial behavior. So they're already beginning to look forward. Can it work in the beach? We don't know. But we want to talk to our citizens to see if that's an area to go in. So any other questions?
Thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you.
I think it's really great, and thank you so much. But I think the next day, phase going forward is critical. And the one thing we know that we are blessed in Virginia Beach is with a very vibrant faith-based community. Strength of Virginia Beach, or the people of Virginia Beach, and we are a city of many faiths, and it's the glue that holds us together. And if we can start, we're getting them to work collaboratively instead of silos like we've been, and, you know, can be, you know, combined with the other resources from the city. You know, and, you know, I'm delighted to hear that, you know, we are ahead of the curve, but we are, once again, are very much moving forward proactively, as you say, not sitting on our laurels. But, you know, we just want the public to know that we are a work in progress, and we'll keep folks in the loop. Okay? Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, this latter time, we're going to move forward with a public comment on the candidates for the city council vacancy for the Bayside Director. Okay, if we can call some speakers?
Yes, sir. Mayor, since we're running a little ahead of schedule, if some folks haven't, haven't arrived yet, we can, I can just recall their name, if that's okay?
That would be great.
Okay, perfect. So the first speaker is Barbara Messner. I haven't seen Ms. Messner yet. The next speaker is Hannah Sobel. I see some folks outside, just making their way in. David Redman.
Good afternoon, Dick.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of council. Well, if you want a tough job, try following Ron Ripley on Planning Commission. That's what I did. Those are the shoes I stepped into. When Louis Jones nominated me to succeed Ron as Planning Commissioner for the Bayside District, he did so three more times. And this year marks my 16th year in that role. Over all those years, I had many private conversations with Louis. We talked about all kinds of council business, but mainly, of course, about planning. And when we talked and we were kicking things around, Louis would often ask, well, what does Ron think? He asked that a lot. Because if you're Bayside District, you gotta know what Ron Ripley thinks. When Louis had the opportunity to put someone on the Development Authority, he asked Ron for suggestions. Ron thought about it and offered our colleague, Joe Strange, who now serves as the Authority's vice chair. Joe Strange has served the Centerville District on Planning Commission and rose to be both vice chair and chairman of the commission. And like Ron Ripley, he was greatly admired and respected, and still is. Great choice. But Louis had turned to Ron, and that was a great choice. And Joe Strange told me a story. Years ago, Planning Commission chose Joe and Ron to serve on a subcommittee to draft our Affordable Housing Ordinance. So they met. Joe said, I go to the first meeting, and Ron's got this big fat notebook. He'd written out notes and he had all these exhibits. Ron had built a spreadsheet with calculations for how to build housing more affordably, but still meet our high development standards. I mean, he really looked at it. Joe said, he'd done all the work. He'd done all the work. And it was the first meeting. And that's a great metaphor. Ron Ripley comes prepared. He's thoughtful, he's smart, he's a superb businessman, and he epitomizes public service. Ron doesn't need this job. He doesn't need the money, or recognition, or anything. He simply wants to serve Virginia Beach. No wonder that everywhere he serves, his colleagues elevate him to leadership roles. Planning Commission, he becomes chairman. Old Dominion University, he becomes rector. He even serves in leadership at his church. I've lived in Bayside for 44 years of my life. I went on dates at the Shore Drive-In. My parents took their boys to dinner at Duck Inn when I was a toddler. So I believe that like Louis Jones and Ron, that I have street cred in Bayside. There aren't five people in Virginia Beach, and no one in Bayside, whose opinions, values, judgment, and acumen I trust like I trust Ron Ripley's.
Thank you.
I urge this council to appoint Ronald C. Ripley.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
The next speaker is Nancy Rogan. After Ms. Rogan is Maddy Brooks.
Good afternoon, and thank you for having me here today. I appreciate the opportunity, and I'm honored to be here today to speak to you about Charlotte Zito. My name is Nancy Rogan, and I'm the Community Engagement Officer at WHRO Public Media, which is owned by the 21 local school divisions. Virginia Beach is one of our bosses, one of my bosses. One of my roles is to serve as a station liaison for three community boards. One of them is the Community Advisory Board, which is an FCC requirement. Charlotte has been a very active member and a valuable member of the board for five years. One of the roles of the Community Advisory Board is to be our eyes and ears in the region. This provides the station information on critical community issues that may be important for our producers and our journalists, and to you. Charlotte is a valuable member of the board, always in touch with the community, aware of new and growing topics, and wanting to make things better. And as an educator, the success of our youth is a priority for her. She is keenly aware of the needs as they are the future of the region. She is a, has a broad awareness of what is important to the area, understanding what affects Hampton Roads, affects Virginia Beach. Much of my work at WHRO involves engaging the community in conversations around social issues. If I need an expert on a topic, a speaker, or a panelist, Charlotte is one of my first calls. She is connected, she is respected, and she is invested in her community. She knows who to talk to about what you're looking for. During her tenure in CAB, Charlotte has demonstrated strong leadership skills, which led her to be selected as vice chair for the past two years, and has now stepped into the chair position. She is collaborative, she is collegial, and results-oriented. She also works to help ensure the board represents diversity, which is important for Hampton Roads and for the station. During, as long as I have known Charlotte, I've known her to be caring, to be thoughtful, and empathetic. She is selfless, she gives her time to others, and I would actually say she enthusiastically gives her time to others. You just need to speak to her five minutes and see that, that energy within her. As long as, I strongly recommend Charlotte for the empty seat on the city council. She is positive, she has good values, good judgment, and cares about her fellow citizens, and she loves the city of Virginia Beach. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Maddy Brooks. After Ms. Brooks will be Grayson Bryant.
Good afternoon. I'm honored to speak in front of you and on behalf of Mrs. Charlotte Zito. My name is Maddy Brooks. I am a current student at the University of Virginia and an employee of Virginia Beach Life Saving Service, where I've served as a lifeguard at the oceanfront for four years. I'm also a former student of Ms. Charlotte Zito, who taught me five out of six semesters of high school English. So naturally, I've spent many days absorbing knowledge and advice, as well as discussing our similar interests and hobbies, like reading and running, and especially our shared paths of lifeguarding on the beach. In all of these days, she was not only an incredible teacher, optimistic and patient, as well as organized and structured qualities I particularly appreciate as someone who plans their days by the hour, but more importantly, she became my mentor. So much as writing my college recommendation letter, she evolved into a guide for a young woman learning how to navigate the transition into an influential piece of my life, college. Although I can recall the plot of Lonesome Dove, some of the exceptionally meaningful lessons I held on to even after Mrs. Zito's classes pertain to the importance of integrity, where she emphasized the value of being honest and moral when no one's watching and at every given opportunity. She's the essence of the teacher-student bond of trust. She holds open book tests, online exams, expects that everyone read the assigned 30 pages. This allows her to build strong and substantial relationships with students such as myself. I find this notion of forming genuine connections with students a challenging task, one that can only be accomplished if such a teacher is willing to go beyond what they're simply asked to do. Working with students on her breaks and after school and any free moment she had, creating extra study guides, adding games to lesson plans to make material more coherent, Mrs. Zito certainly checks off the box, exceeded expectations, as her goal has always been to see her students succeed. It is this practice of selflessly going beyond expectations and limits without being told to do so that inherently makes Mrs. Zito a capable leader. Throughout my time in school with her, it was apparent that her initiative and confidence were unmatched. Even other teachers seemed to admire her willingness to stick to her values and what is right, and when she spoke, others stopped to listen. Because of her constant support and precedence of moral leadership that she extends to me to this day, I carry myself with a greater confidence and integrity doing right, especially when no one's watching. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Grayson Bryant. Grayson Bryant. And after Mr. Bryant is Vanessa, Vanessa Temple Yurick.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good to see you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all for the opportunity to speak on behalf of Charlotte. It's a pleasure today to speak on behalf of my colleague and my good friend of 18 years, Charlotte Zito, as she seeks to fill the Bayside District Council City seat. My name is Grayson Bryant. I work as the Assistant Headmaster for Norfolk Academy, where I serve on the school's senior leadership team, their senior administrative team, and also teach class in Latin American history and Spanish IV and V this year, so pray for me. In grad school, I wanted to make a bunch of money, so I went and I got a master's in Spanish literature with a focus in medieval poetry. I tacked on a PhD in educational leadership, where I studied the initiatives for diversity, equity, and inclusion, and how they intersected with independent school leadership. My education, my present position is outgrowth of my personal and deep commitment to community service, which I continue to fulfill as elder at First Presbyterian Church in Norfolk, on the board of the Boys and Girls Club of Southeast Virginia, and through my work to better the lives of the working poor and the homeless through soup kitchens and also the Norfolk Emergency Shelter Team that was available during COVID-19. As you guys have gleaned by now, I hope, Charlotte possesses a singular combination of talent, experience, political nuance, and a strong stick-to-it-iveness that will characterize her every endeavor. A proud daughter of Hampton Roads, her most recent service on the May 31 Committee highlights Mrs. Zito's dedication to her hometown, as well as distinctive empathy and innate positivity that encourages her to wade into tragedy and sorrow and bring healing and unity to a wounded community. Charlotte lives her life to create a world that will be better tomorrow than it is today. I had the joy to watch this process firsthand on a daily basis, where Charlo, where Charlotte executes her many responsibilities in Norfolk Academy, whether it be as the academic chair of the junior class, where she makes sure that she is able to help every student reach their full potential, to where she works, leading the Tunstall Student Council, or whether it be in the upper school courses that she teaches. If you've ever watched her manage a group of kids, excited, passionate, a bit hormonal, and a whole bunch of teachers, mind you, who we think that we are smarter than everybody, you know how qualified she is. Her passion for education extends to her board work with WHRO, which has provided her with the understanding of how a public-funded institution can maximize impact on a limited budget. Her work, her board work at WHRO has provided Charlotte with the essential exposure to the judicial responsibilities and organizational governments, which will undoubtedly inform well her work on the city council. She cares passionately about education. Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Vanessa Temple Yurick, and then David Kidd.
Good afternoon, and welcome.
Good afternoon. Thank you, city council members, for this opportunity to speak on behalf of Ms. Charlotte Zito. My name is Vanessa Yurick. I've been a resident of Virginia Beach since 2015, and my husband was born and raised here in Virginia Beach. I'm a friend and colleague of Ms. Zito. Upon moving to Virginia Beach, I practiced law in the Virginia Beach Office of Williams Mullin for five years, after having previously practiced in New York City for seven years. Two years ago, I pivoted my career and joined the faculty of Norfolk Academy as a history teacher, among other
teacher, among other roles. During this time, I've had the pleasure of getting to know Charlotte, and particularly during the last year, I've come to know her well. As Councilman Rouse surmised in his remarks last week, Ms. Zito is an engaging and beloved teacher. She makes her 10th grade English class fun and interesting according to her students. This is because she carries with her a brimming passion and enthusiasm for both the subject matter and the students. It is the same energy that I know Charlotte will bring to her work for the council and the residents of the Bayside District. She will undoubtedly bring a scholarly approach to her work. She will study the issues, be informed about the various approaches, and act with moral clarity. I, too, am a runner, and last fall, on a weekly basis, I would run with Charlotte and other faculty in the neighborhoods surrounding Norfolk Academy. During our runs, we would discuss the issues of the day, and I learned of Charlotte's desire and commitment to civic engagement and public service. I believe serving the public is a true calling for Charlotte. From hearing her voice on the radio for WHRO fundraising drives, to the pride and honor she has in serving on the May 31 Memorial Committee, I know that serving on city council would be a role she would take on humbly with drive and purpose. Finally, I believe Charlotte has the youthful vigor and principled outlook that would make her a perfect addition to city council. As a mom and high school teacher, she is keenly aware of the issues and concerns that animate our youngest citizens and our future. In addition, from speaking to Charlotte about issues concerning some of the most marginalized members of our society, I know that Charlotte will be a caring and empathetic voice for those in need. I wholeheartedly support the appointment of my friend Charlotte Zito to fill the Bayside District seat on Virginia Beach City Council. Thank you.
The next speaker is David Kidd. After Mr. Kidd is Lacey Sherry.
Good afternoon, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for the chance to speak on behalf of Charlotte. Ladies and gentlemen of the Virginia Beach City Council, I'm delighted today to speak to you on behalf of Charlotte Zito. My name is Dr. David Kidd, and I've known Charlotte and her family for over 26 years, as I was her English teacher at Norfolk Academy, where I also proudly teach with her today. I've been a resident of Hampton Roads since my wife and I moved here in the summer of 1996. Although we live in Norfolk, where we raised our daughter Sophie, my wife is a teacher at Old Nation School. She's starting her 22nd year in the Virginia Beach Public School System this month. I proudly serve as the Vice President of the Virginia Beach's Coastal Virginia Unitarian Universalist, a church my family has belonged to for the past 20 years, and the only Unitarian church in all of Southampton Roads. I care deeply for the future of Virginia Beach, and this is why I'm here today, to tell you why Charlotte Zito would be an excellent member of the city council. Charlotte is one of only a handful of teachers who have taught in all three divisions of our school, the lower, middle, and upper. Both as a parent and as a teacher, Charlotte well understands the ways that children learn and grow, and she sees the entire child, complete with social, emotional, athletic, and academic needs, and gifts ready to be developed with caring adults' guidance. Over her time at our school, Charlotte has been an incredibly effective teacher, coach, mentor, and director of programs, with duties ranging from coaching, cheerleading, directing student travel, advising and mentoring, and of course, teaching a full load of English classes at the highest of levels, often designing new courses with innovative and demanding themes, such as courses focused in the American West or romance and marriage. Rarely can you find English teachers as comfortable guiding students through the complexities of Jane Austen and Emily Bronte novels as they are working with Larry McMurtry's Lonesome Dove or Jonathan Krakauer's Into Thin Air, but that's the kind of intellect that Charlotte warmly brings to her immensely popular classes. Anyone who can inspire teenagers to work hard with understanding their literary heritage and to write at the highest levels of precision and insight has revealed a strong mind and character, and that's what Charlotte Zito has done for many years at our school. I've watched Charlotte teach and counsel students through the complexities of a Shakespeare play, the kinesthetic rhythms of a cheerleading routine, and the social and emotional complexities of a loss in a family, all within a single weekday's work. I've even heard her once, off the top of her head, give a student the most elegant and simple explanation of the difference between a misplaced and a dangling modifier that I have ever heard or read. Charlotte has an excellent mind and heart, and she brings an unbelievable amount of energy and discernment to all that she does. A major contributor to all school programs, Charlotte is a committed citizen who constantly serves community efforts, working with programs like the Breakthrough Collaborative, a national organization that works to empower students from under-resourced communities and points them to college success, or with the United Jewish Federation of Tidewater's annual Eli Wiesel Writing Contest, or the excellent work that Charlotte has done-
Thank you very much, sir. Most appreciate it. Thank you for your input.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Lacey Sherry, and then Sophie Wilson.
Good afternoon, and welcome.
Good afternoon. Thank you, members of city council, for inviting us to speak about Charlotte Zito today. My name is Lacey Shirey. I'm the Executive Director for the Chesapeake Humane Society, and I first met Charlotte in 2017. She was one of 60 applicants for the WHRO Community Advisory Board, and they were 60 qualified applicants. It was a pivotal year for us because of the number of applicants, and we had to select nine to join our board. So Charlotte's application really stood out to me. There were a few things, other than just having a well-written, eloquent application, her involvement in the community, her theater acting, writing, running on behalf of local half-marathons stood out to me, as well as her leadership and mentorship, working with students, not only for professional development, but in encouraging them to give back to the community through volunteerism and charity work. Charlotte has brought helpful insight to the WHRO Community Advisory Board, where I serve with her. She shows genuine empathy and compassion as we discuss some of the more difficult challenges we face here in Hampton Roads with the WHRO producers, and she provides thoughtful and productive insight based on her involvement in the community and also her background, her educational background. Charlotte is now our Chair for the WHRO Community Advisory Board, and I'm confident that she will provide great leadership and continue to build on the good work. Charlotte served as vice chair through the pandemic, and along with our Chair, she led a very engaging charge to keep all of the board members engaged and involved in our community, so that we could continue to be the eyes and ears for WHRO. She is a strong voice for our next generation and an advocate for inclusive, high-quality education for our children. She clearly has a special love for her city of Virginia Beach, but she remains connected to the rest of Hampton Roads. Charlotte appreciates the beauty of Virginia Beach and all that it has to offer, and I believe she will work to make this community more vibrant. She is a lover of the arts and an avid runner. I recall seeing her just this past fall on a chilly February morning, running at First Landing State Park. So what stands out most to me about Charlotte is her warmth and her approachability, her willingness to listen, and her ability to be diplomatic in her decisions. I believe that she will do an excellent job, listening to her constituents and to her fellow council members, before coming to a conclusion on what's best for Virginia Beach. Thank you for considering her for the position.
Thanks for coming. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Sophie Wilson. After Ms. Wilson is Conrad Shisventer.
Welcome.
Good afternoon. Everyone, my name is Sophie Wilson, and I'm a former student of Ms. Zito's. Thank you to the city of Virginia Beach for allowing me the opportunity to speak on behalf of Ms. Zito today. I graduated Norfolk Academy in 2020, where I had the pleasure of having Ms. Zito as my teacher twice, once in 10th grade and once in 12th grade. When I think about Ms. Zito, three words come to mind: caring, organized, and selfless. I have fond memories walking into her classroom, where I was always greeted with a warm smile, which was then followed by an engaging, organized, and productive class. I was fortunate to have many exceptional teachers at Norfolk Academy, and Ms. Zito was one of the very best. She has high standards for her students because she deeply cares for them. She takes pride in her work, as evidenced by how she challenges her students to become better readers and writers. I observed these three traits when Ms. Zito was my teacher, but I also observed them outside of her job responsibility. After a rough freshman year of college, I decided to transfer. I needed someone to proof my transfer college essays, and Ms. Zito, without hesitation, offered to prove them for me. Not only did she make stellar edits, but she got back to me within one day of my sending them to her. Between her teaching responsibilities, extracurricular leadership at NA, and being a wife and a mom, Ms. Zito is a busy woman. She made the time to promptly help me while balancing all of her other responsibilities. It does not come as a surprise to me that Ms. Zito has put her name forward to serve out the remainder of late Councilman Lewis Jones's term. She deeply cares about those around her and selflessly gives of her time, energy, and expertise to her community. I'm confident that Ms. Zito will devote herself to competently and passionately making our city better by serving in this role, and I encourage you to support her candidacy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Conrad Shisventer, and then after Ms. Shisventer is Scott Flax.
Welcome, Conrad.
This is a first. All right, so first impressive digs, really great new city hall. I also want to send out a great appreciation to Councilman Jones. I only got to see him a few times when running for Centerville in 2018, and he was running for Bayside. A very polite and earnest man. I respect him. I hope this brief appointment is worthy of the Bayside District. And on that, I consulted the Facebook feed of the 10-minute interviews, and in that I want to encourage you, as a council body, to consider Ripley III. On the matters of district voting and Rudy Loop, I prefer the other candidates. Too much development interest as well, it seemed to me, so we have enough of that on council as it stands, so I suggest looking next to Ms. Miles and Ms. Zito more so. I'm greatly delighted at Ms. Miles's resume. She's a great voice for Bayside, and I appreciate her growing up near Burton Station, because I remember how long it took the city to properly provide utilities for Burton Station, so I think her voice would be solid on this matter. I'm torn right now, because I like Zito's willingness to politely engage Councilman Moss on various questions face-to-face, and I like Zito's appreciation for district voting while wanting Rudy Loop to be a surf-friendly park and not overly developed. That overdevelopment, again, is already highly represented on council. A teacher's voice isn't, not as highly represented as I want it to be. So an English teacher as a councilwoman, while going into a period with staffing issues for the city, will also require a great city diligence on getting talent back into the classroom. I'm on such an education advocate when we need it. While I suspect Ripley will be chosen, and I have equal appreciation for Miles and Zito, whoever is chosen by council, I personally will call on them to be as vocal on issues in the public and social media, do a town hall or two, and make sure to care for the underserved community interest over that of big-money tourist interests. So on that note, I say thank you to you all, and have a great day.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Scott Flax. After Mr. Flax is Salvatore DeBarro.
Good afternoon. How are you doing?
I'm good, Mayor. How are you?
Good. Thank you.
Well, hello, council. Thank you for allowing us to come. I think hearing citizens' voices is important to do. I'm Scott Flax. I'm an attorney here. I'm a local boy, child, born and raised here in Virginia Beach, and I think people volunteering to be part of council is such a difficult task. So what do we look for? I think we look for people who are empathetic, who are caring, who are listeners, and I'm here up here speaking for Ms. Zito, and that's what she is. You've heard from her past students, you've heard from her colleagues at WHRO. Teachers, by their nature, have to be listeners. They have to be able to hear what their students are saying, and as council members, you have to be able to hear what your citizens are saying and react to it. And that's what Ms. Zito is going to have the ability to do if you appoint her for Mr. Jones's term. I've known Ms. Zito for 30-plus years, and the entire time that I've known her, she has been kind, she has been energetic, she is as smart as you can be. And the fact that you keep having speaker after speaker come up here to talk on her behalf, I think, is wonderful. One of the things that I appreciate about Ms. Zito, she was born and raised here, she went away to college, she graduated with honors from UVA, she could have gone anywhere in the world, and she chose to come back to Virginia Beach, like many of you council members who grew up here and came back and chose to be in Virginia Beach. And she's choosing to raise her family here, and now she wants to make Virginia Beach even better. And she wants to do it for her parents who live here, for herself, for her children, and for all of us. Giving that time is something that Charlotte would be able to do and do well, and if she gets the opportunity to do so as a city council member, just like she's led at WHRO or on the Holocaust with Eli Wiesel, or at Norfolk Academy, she'll be able to excel like she always can. So I'm up here today endorsing her, hoping that you give her the time, the energy, and your voice, so that she can have her voice sitting up in that seat. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Salvatore DeBarro, and then Mr. Gilbert Bland.
Good afternoon. How are you doing?
Good afternoon. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Wilson, and members of city council. My name is Sal DeBarro. I'm honored to share with you this evening or afternoon why I believe Delsino Miles should be appointed to the vacant city council seat. We were all saddened when our longtime friend and colleague, Mr. Lewis Jones, affectionately known as Mr. Bayside, passed away. Recently, a friend of mine came up to me and said, "Sal, I understand you're supporting Delsino Miles to replace Lewis Jones." I thought about that comment. You can't replace four decades of council experience and ability. The best you can hope for is to fill his seat with the right person. This is why this is a critical time in Virginia Beach's history, to have a proven leader with high values and a solid vision for our future. The right first person for this role is Delsino Miles. What are we looking for in a council member to fill such a seat? I think we need an individual who understands the complicated issues the council has to deal with, and who in the past has worked with the city on a myriad of issues. Delsino not only has worked with our own city council members, but it has regional experience with other city councils. This experience is invaluable. I also believe we want a council member who has worked with a broad base of ethnic groups, who tries to understand their differences and needs. I know Delsino has those capabilities. I've known Ms. Miles for 25 years, beginning when I joined the Neptune Festival Board of Directors in 1994. We continued our relationship on the board of Virginia Aquarium. Serving on both nonprofit boards, I had the pleasure of working with Ms. Miles on a variety of issues. She is quick-study and does her homework to distill complicated issues. I can tell you, she is dedicated to the community and our citizens of Virginia Beach. Seeking this seat is not a resume builder for her. When you read her impressive resume, you learn about her numerous professional accomplishments, including running a highly successful, woman-owned, minority firm in our city. Her many volunteer roles with a variety of nonprofit and business organizations, like the Chamber of Commerce. My definition of a leader is simply not defined by their popularity, but by their willingness to take on risks, share the credit, admit they are wrong, and motivate and partner for the greater good. Most recently, during her time as Chair of the Virginia Aquarium Foundation, Ms. Miles led the wildly successful capital campaign to raise $14 million in private monies to support the city of Virginia Beach's aquarium expansion. This is an audacious goal that she successfully fulfilled. Finally, on a personal note, I can attest that Ms. Miles is focused, is not afraid to address and take challenges on, and will tirelessly serve our citizens well. Del is here to move our city forward, to aid in creating a cohesive community, and she will add value to this seat. You have an opportunity and an obligation to select the best person for this role. I don't think it'd be anybody than her. I am confident that Ms. Miles is that person.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Gilbert Bland. After Mr. Bland is Scott Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and fellow council members, or council members. I am Gil Bland, President and CEO of the Urban League of Hampton Roads. Our Urban League is a local affiliate of the National Urban League, the oldest civil rights organization in the nation. For over a century, the National Urban League has advocated for underserved communities and residents in areas of housing, health, education, and workforce. This past January, we hosted a virtual Martin Luther King breakfast celebration at the convention center that had global news coverage and nearly 5,000 viewers. at the convention center that had global news coverage and nearly 5,000 viewers. We maintain office space at the Hive and Town Center. I've been a resident of this city for the past three decades, and currently have two sons in Virginia Beach High School. I am engaged in a number of leadership positions, thus I am a vested member of this city and community. I only offer my background to provide context for the values that the communities I serve feel are imperative to be a council member, while I am comfortable sharing my advocacy of Delsino Miles. I've known Delsino for over 30 years, I can speak of her broad experiences, but will specifically address two areas, education and business, because both are vital for a healthy city. She understands education. Delsino was Chair of the Virginia Beach School Board, or Vice Chair. I have been impressed with her leadership in higher education with the State Council of Higher Education, and Chair of Tyewater Community College. She understands business, and business, she's a successful entrepreneur, but also past Chair of the HR Chamber of Commerce, current President of Virginia Beach Vision. Her efforts are vast, but reflects not only individual skill, but she ably demonstrates her capacity to be a team player and work collaboratively to achieve goals. Working together should be a critical skill for council members to achieve consensus. In short, she's a results-oriented and visibly-present leader for decades, at the highest levels throughout our community. Her ethics and morality are unimpeachable. This city has in excess of a one-third minority population. Our children need role models. Delsino represents what our city residents and students need and should aspire to become. I understand leadership, and I can quickly recognize a leader. Delsino is such a leader. Our city will benefit greatly from her service. Thank you.
Thanks Gil, good to see you.
The next speaker is Scott Miller. After Mr. Miller is Woody Russell Turner.
Scott, welcome.
Good afternoon. I'm here today to speak to the attributes of Delsino Miles and to voice my support for her appointment to the vacant City Council slot representing the Bayside District. But before I do so, I'd be remiss if I didn't say a few words about Louis Jones. When I came to Virginia Wesleyan as President, Louis reached out to me in a fatherly way to discuss sensitive issues of town-gown relationship. He was one of the early individuals who underscored to me the disappointment that previous Virginia Wesleyan leadership had not openly celebrated the institution's prominent location in Virginia Beach. When I, as a newcomer to the area, asked him for some helpful hints as to how I could do that, he said, "Well, a good start would be to change your darn mailing address." We followed his advice, and today we celebrate being the oldest institution of higher education serving our home community of Virginia Beach, and we want to thank you for the many ways you support us. Now let me turn my attention to some comments in support of Delsino Miles filling Louis's seat. I've come to know Delsino through our work together on behalf of a number of civic organizations, including our service Together on the Virginia Beach Vision Board of Directors and the Hampton Roads Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. I've called on her often to share her wisdom with students in our business program. Educated at Stanford University, one of the most selective and prestigious universities in the country, she brings a wealth of book knowledge, but she also brings practical experience that our students relate to. That knowledge and those skills will translate well to her service with the City Council. Through our work together, I found her to be approachable, self-motivated, balanced, fair, innovative, and personable in her response to people with differing opinions. It's apparent that she loves this city and has a passion for the quality of life in the Bayside District. I'm sure the other finalists are good people. I don't know them. I do know Delsina Miles. I know that she'll represent the Bayside District with tremendous energy and a strong spirit of collegiality that's badly needed in these divisive times. I wholeheartedly support Delsino Miles's appointment to the Virginia Beach City Council, and I urge you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
The next speaker is Woody Russell Turner, and then after that will be Jaclyn Morgan Francis. And Mr. Mayor, we're having an issue or technical difficulty with our timer, so just ignore the red light, we're, IT's working on it.
We will get through it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of City Council. I'm Russell Turner, and I've been a resident of the city of Virginia Beach for 42 years. I appreciate the opportunity to speak about Delsino Miles. Delsino is no secret to most of you. Her community and regional activities are many and varied. In my tenure as the Director of Development at the Virginia Aquarium and Marine Science Center Foundation, I want to share with you her success as the President, particularly during the $14-million capital campaign. As she shared her vision and expectations with the 35 foundation trustees, she enthusiastically encouraged each foundation trustee to enhance the envisioned visibility of the Virginia Aquarium as a world-class organization and crown jewel of the city of Virginia Beach. She asked each trustee to give personally and to help solicit funds from individuals, companies, and foundations. We had a 100% commitment in the amount of $6 million from all of the trustees within the first 90 days. Delsino was instrumental in obtaining a six-figure pledge from one of the city's largest employers, setting the example for the other trustees to solicit donations necessary to meet our goal. She does her research and appeals to a sense of community. Because of her collaborative leadership style, all of the trustees shared responsibilities and growing the initial campaign goal of $10 million to $14 million. It is my pleasure to share with you only one of the many successes Delsino has experienced. I believe you will be excited to have such a person on your leadership team. As a resident of Virginia Beach, I trust Delsina to be a good steward and to represent the citizens and their interest. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, I'm happy to say that the timer is now working again. The next speaker is Jaclyn Morgan Francis, and then Carla Bailey.
Good afternoon and welcome.
Good afternoon, City Council, thank you, and I'm honored to speak before you for Delsina Miles. I am a cousin of Delsina Miles. Delsina Miles, a great human. Raised by a single parent, Evelyn Miles. One of eight siblings. Several of them college grads and leaders in their respective fields. When I think of Delsina Miles, I think of five phrases. She's a giver. She's a humble person. She has a great sense of humor. She's a leader of leaders. And she's an honest person. Delsina the giver. Our family had a family reunion one time 20 years ago, and Delsina just happened to say she was gonna give 10 of the students $500. Out of that, the outcome was teachers, government workers, and law firm workers. She believes in giving back, and she believes in education. Delsina is a humble person. I'm hearing a lot of things I've never heard before. I've been around Delsina all of my life, and I've never heard a lot of this. She just quietly does what she does, in the family, in the community, in the church, and with leaders. Like I said, she gave that $5,000 20 years ago, that was big to me as a little young person. She's done church projects, big church projects, and she works with lawmakers. She's a humble, strong person. Delsina is hilarious. Sometimes we're at family functions, and she'll see the littlest thing, and she'll make me just crack up. And she quietly does these things. That's why I asked her to be the presider over our aunt's 100th birthday party this month, because I know she would be in control, she would monitor the situation and make us laugh at everything that happens. She is an entertainer, but she gets the job done. That's the thing that we need in leadership, and she does it with excellence. Delsina is a leader of leaders. 20 years ago, she was ready for this job. But she died to her vision, and she began to work in the community with other people, and their visions and their goals. And you've heard, a lot of people are saying that she's done this. She is the mark of a leader. She has the mark of a leader. Delsina is honest, she's an honest person. If she tells you she's gonna do something, you can take it to the bank, she's going to do it, it's done. By appointing Delsina Miles to the city of Virginia Beach.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
The next speaker is Carla Bailey. After Ms. Bailey, Ms. Paul Merritt.
Hi Carla.
Hi, good afternoon. Mr. Mayor. Vice Mayor Wilson, City Council members, thank you for your time today. My name is Carla Bailey, and I'm a business owner here in Virginia Beach. I'm the former President of the National Association of Women Business Owners, right here in our region. I am also the former Chair of the Minority Business Council. And I currently am the Vice Chair of a university foundation. I've had the pleasure of knowing Delsino Miles for almost 20 years. There are few people that I know like Delsino who has the ability to team-build, problem-solve, unify, influence, and lead graciously. Delsino does it all, both on a local level and on a regional level, for whatever common good that she is at the helm of or is a part of. In this instance, I'm honored to support her and ask for your vote to make Delsino Miles your partner in the continued good work of Councilman Louis Jones. She is an amazing small-business owner and has owned her business for over 30 years. She exudes temperance and sound judgment. And most importantly, like the late, great Louis Jones, Delsino Miles loves Virginia Beach. I cannot think of a more qualified and honorable person to continue to move the needle forward in our great city. I have personally seen Delsino in a host of leadership roles. She is a problem solver, a visionary, a unifier, and a sophisticated executor of complex things, and she does it all with grace. Delsina is one of our own. She is Virginia Beach's daughter. She is connected to the people. She understands the historical aspects of Virginia Beach, its politics, its communities, its strengths, and things that we can grow. I worked with Delsino on the Virginia Beach Minority Business Council. She was appointed by this very body to lead small, women, minority, and veteran-owned businesses. Her meetings were ran with top-notch efficiency and were highly effective and productive. Leadership is one's ability to have common-sense goals and objectives, and the brilliance to gain the majority support to get the job done. Delsina Miles embodies leadership. She was appointed to the Tyewater Community College. She's been appointed by this body to the Virginia Beach School Board. She was appointed by this body to senior services. She was appointed by this body to the Minority Business Council. And she was appointed by this body to the Process Improvement Committee. And today, I respectfully request your vote for her appointment yet again to this body, the Virginia Beach City Council. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
The next speaker is Paul Merritt. After Mr. Merritt is Thad Hunter.
Welcome Paul.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. I had the real distinct pleasure to stand here before you and endorse Delsino Miles for the temporary seat of City Council. You know, I think we all recognize that having this empty chair here is really sad news for us with the passing of Louis. I think we all appreciate what he brought for our city, but it also gives an opportunity now for new leadership to step into the void. I think all of you probably know Delsino Miles, she's been in this city, she was born and raised here. She is Virginia Beach, as her cousin just said. I also want to say that when I read her resume, which was a while back, I was kind of blown away. I honestly don't think I've read too many quite like that. But the one thing that sticks out to me, and I think the previous speaker also hit on it, is her selfless service. She does things for the city because she cares. I got to know her extremely well on Virginia Beach Vision when I was the President, and she was one of my go-to people. I thought her opinions were informed, and she was always able to articulate both sides of the argument. So she is a person that clearly understands the issues, and that's what I think the Board of, the City Board, or, excuse me, the City Council requires. She is now our President, and she has brought that thoughtful and serious consideration to all the issues, and we have now learned to rely heavily upon her as one of our leading spokespeople for the business community here in Virginia Beach. I cannot think of a better nominee to put themselves into this body for a limited amount of time than somebody with the experience, the judgment, the wisdom, the thoughtfulness, and the compassion that Delsino Miles brings. So I think, again, I hope that you all will consider her very favorably on your vote today. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Thad Hunter. After Mr. Hunter is Karen Hunter.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Thad Hunter Senior. I'm a retired Navy veteran, served for 21 years in the Navy. Delsina Miles is my older sister, and I'm very proud to be here to share some insight from my perspective. And just to let you know that Dell is a focused leader that's dedicated to serving others and empowering those around her. For Dell, leadership is not a position or title. She's just a natural person with the ability to engage and motivate others to achieve desired outcomes. Dell has always taken the initiative to step into leadership roles. If she feels that there's an opportunity to solve an issue, address a challenge, or make something better, she has no problem with rolling up her sleeves and getting involved wherever she's needed, wherever she can do the most good. She makes people feel valued by taking the time to get to know them, understand them, whether it's one of her staff members, a board member, community member, or an intern just getting started in their career. She treats them all with respect. And she listens to them, and she gives them her genuine feedback. Committed to improving the community and those around her, Dell always strives for excellence. She's very detailed, driven, and dedicated. She's also no-nonsense and direct when needed, which is often what brings out the best in those around her and those that are working with her. Delsina would be a tremendous asset to the Virginia Beach City Council representing the Bayside District, an area where she has spent most of her life. She cares deeply about the community and those around her, and she would no doubt be honorably continuing the legacy of the late City Councilman Louis Jones. I'm thankful for this opportunity and for your time. Have a good day.
Thanks very much, appreciate it.
The next speaker is Karen Hunter. And then Dorcas Helfent Browning.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Virginia Beach Council Board. I count it a great honor to be here to stand before you in representing my sister and speaking about my sister Delsina Miles. Firstly, I thank God for the privilege to be here and the opportunity to speak on her behalf. Delsina is truly a servant leader. Her resume, which all of you have seen, it applauds her tireless efforts to unselfishly serve the Bayside and Hampton Roads community, in which her indigenous roots run tremendously deep. As her younger brother, I'm amazed at her energy and impeccable management skills to engage on multiple city projects with a spirit of excellence in all that she sets her mind to do. I've always known, Big Sis, as I lovely call her, to be a strong proponent of leadership. I've always known, big sis, as I lovely call her, to be a strong proponent of leadership. She leads through diversity, inclusion. She believes in leveling the playing field so that all in expanding business and citizens alike know that they have an advocate for positive economic growth and communal stability. She leads with passion. She ignites others to do their very best through her very high moral standards. And she demands that of herself and she certainly demands it of others. Never one, as my brother said, to shy away from a task that may seem insurmountable, but rather promoting a synergy to discover what is the best solution for her community and for herself. One thing I know for sure is that should Delcino be selected to serve among you, her dedication, her exceptional leadership ability will be a tremendous addition to each of you and she shall definitely not disappoint. There's a Bible passage which speaks to this in, "There's one who desires to be greatest among you." And whoever desires to be great, that person should be your servant. I'm thankful to be able to tell you today that she will be a great servant among you and a great servant to the Bayside community. God bless you and thank you very much.
Thank you sir.
The next speaker is Dorcas Helfent Browning. And then Brian Stevens.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Honored members of City Council, thank you for your service and it is a pleasure to be here today. Delcino and I have known each other through volunteer work, whether it's civic, philanthropic, foundation work, education work, governmental appointment, whatever we do for a quarter of a century, that's scary to me. And in that time, I got to watch her. You know, part of my role is being usually a little bit ahead was to help mentor those people behind me so that when they achieve success, they're ready to rock and roll. And I am thrilled to have watched Delcino's career because I know how hard she works. She's been called a leader, but I'll tell you what else she is. She's a worker. She is one that when you give her a task, it gets done. She'll inspire her committee, or team, or group of people to analyze, engage, and go forward. I was chairman of Hampton Roads Chamber a couple of years ahead of her and I kept her busy. You'll always, my mother said, "There are workhorses and there are show horses. This gal can work." And I noticed some of the things that I respected about her. She's smart, intelligent, thoughtful, well-informed, educated well, very well, evaluative, and she understands that while you, ladies and gentlemen, City Council must look at the present, your job is unique. In business, we can go a few years out, subject to things. You've got to go decades out. You plan this city as it will be for the next generation and the generation of our grandchildren and the great-grandchildren. It's a monumental task that you face, but I think that it's a good fill-in for Louis. Delcino probably is the perfect candidate. It is in all organizations she has worked with or been past chair or current chair. Her style is always to work well with others. She listens respectfully. And when she listens, she's not afraid to ask questions. You know, I've always been taught that it's not what the press sees coming out, it's what the questions are so that when the press gets the data, it's been totally massaged and reviewed by those who are public trustees. I think that she is very much like that in her volunteer jobs, whether it's chamber, vision, and other activities. We've been on the Virginia Aquarium Board together. We've been on many of the activities because we both believe that we are professional volunteers sometimes in addition to being blessed to be small business owners. So I'm going to say that it's easy for me to endorse Delcino. She's been conscious of the communities around her and the various grassroots culture, history, lifestyle, and needs. Bayside borough is a real mixture. It has those areas that need renovation and renewal and it has some of the finest real estate in Hampton Roads. That's my business, I can tell you about those price points. And it is magnificent borough, but everyone needs a chance to come to that table.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
The next speaker is Brian Stevens. After Mr. Stevens is Bruce Meyer.
Good afternoon Brian.
Honorable Mayor, good afternoon. Distinguished members of the City Council, City Manager, thank you very much for the opportunity to come before you today. I really appreciate it. My name is Brian Stevens and it is my privilege to serve this region as the president and CEO of the Hampton Roads Chamber. It is in that capacity and others that I've had an opportunity to work with Delcino Miles. And therefore, it's my honor to come before you today and strongly support her for this position of City Council. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak, but I also want to thank Delcino. And the reason I'm thanking Delcino for giving me the opportunity to speak is because I know that if I was not standing here today speaking to you, there would be hundreds if not thousands of other people who would gladly come up to this podium and support Delcino Miles because she is that type of leader. She is that type of person that people just get to know and love her and support her. When I thought about what to say today, I thought about what are the traits and attributes and characteristics that the citizens of Virginia Beach most desire in their council member? Let me give you a few that I just came up with. Selfless service, leadership, trustworthiness, ethical, good morals, values, a person of faith, grace, gratitude, giving, integrity, duty, honor, commitment, commitment to your community, commitment to your constituents, commitment to your family and your faith. Competence, positive attitude, having humility, being approachable, being transparent, being a team player. Ladies and gentlemen, I just described Delcino Miles to you. She is that person. She embodies each and every one of those characteristics and traits that I just mentioned. In addition, she has a clear and thorough understanding of the issues, challenges, and concerns of the region. She understands regionalism and what makes us work as a region, which I think is also very important for a member of this City Council. In short, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council, I think Delcino Miles would be an amazing councilwoman. She has my strongest endorsement and I urge you to select her to join your distinguished ranks. I guarantee you, she will not let you down. But more importantly, she will not let the citizens of Virginia Beach down. Thank you again.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Bruce Meyer. After Mr. Meyer is Connie Meyer.
Hey Bruce, how you doing?
Mr. Mayor, how you doing? Madam Vice Mayor, members of City Council. We come in a package team, so Connie's over here, but y'all know that. First of all, I just want to say this is beautiful building. So I'm glad to have the honor to address all of you right now. I am here to support Delcino Miles to fill the Bayside seat. Most of you know me, but for those of you who don't, I own, my wife and I own Meyer Group Insurance. We're an employee benefits firm located in Virginia Beach. We also publish Hampton Roads Weekly, a local newspaper. I serve on the State Board for Community Colleges and I've gotten to know Delcino from education for quite a while. And I've been a resident of Virginia Beach since nineteen seventy-eight, so I've been here quite a while as well. Delcino I've known for over thirty-five years. I'm proud to call her my friend. I could talk to you about her experience, but I'd run out of time. And y'all are familiar with it, so I'm not going to do that. But, you know, I've had a lot of experience with her, working with her from Tidewater Community College. I remember when she was on school board and she served as vice chairman. She's on the Virginia Beach Resort Advisory Committee. She's on the TCC Council right now, the school, the board, and chairs the Educational Council. And of course, we can talk about her being a businesswoman. We can talk about her background, descendant of slaves from Old Princess Anne County. So her roots go deep in Virginia Beach. But the thing about Delcino that I want to talk about is, and I think a lot of people have discussed today, is her attributes. The fact that she's a bridge builder, which is really nice and it's refreshing. She is a consensus seeker. She's a community activist. She is a servant leader. She's bipartisan and she is a true leader in this community. I might have to order in my notes, I apologize for that. But the biggest thing about Delcino, why I think she'll be perfect for this seat, is she needs no on-the-job training. Delcino reflects the spirit of the late Louis Jones the best. And at the end of the day, we're putting somebody in this seat to represent Bayside and to reflect Louis Jones's spirit, which I mentioned, all of those that Delcino does represent is the same as Louis Jones. So at the end of the day, I humbly respect, or humbly request rather, that y'all consider Delcino Miles. I think she'll be a great addition to the City Council. She'll reflect Louis's spirit. She has no on-the-job, no on-the-job trainings needed and I think she'll do a really great job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Connie Meyer and then Jay Burns.
Hi Connie.
Hi. Thank all of you for letting me be here today to speak on behalf of Delcino. And thank you, I know how difficult it is in this day and age to be an elected leader in Virginia Beach. I have the honor of reading a letter from former Governor George Allen and Mrs. Allen. So if you guys, since I'm four-ten, could visualize me being about eighteen inches taller and have dark hair, then you'll sort of get that this is actually from Governor George Allen and Susan Allen, who also is taller than I. Dear members, it is our hope that you will appoint Delcino Miles to the interim open seat of the Virginia Beach City Council. We have known Delcino for many years and have enjoyed learning from her perspective. We admire her commitment to improving opportunities for people in the Commonwealth and recognize the importance of this quality for this position. Delcino is a thoughtful, hard-working, and diligent public servant and business owner. She works well with others as she understands their concerns and takes action on their behalf. Delcino Miles has the temperament, studiousness, and leadership skills necessary to make her an effective member of Virginia Beach's City Council. We are sure that she would be a conscientious contributor to your team and for the people of Virginia Beach. Thank you for your consideration for our good friend Delcino Miles. Sincerely, George and Susan Allen. So on my behalf, I want to say that we're lucky in Virginia Beach to have these great leaders from which to choose that you will have to make a difficult decision between these folks you're going to hear about today. And from me, I will say, for the next six months, there's one really important thing that has to happen in Virginia Beach. And that's to heal some really tough divides that we have in our community now. And if there were ever anyone who could spend the next six months helping you heal those divides and build those bridges, that's Delcino. We have disparate communities who are fighting with each other and we have some hurt feelings and some raw edges and some raw nerves. And I know you guys probably came here today with someone in mind that you might want to choose to appoint for this next six months. And I would ask you to think maybe about Esther in the Bible. Esther in the Bible was a woman who didn't want to be a leader or choose to be a leader, but she really made everybody come to a consensus. And she said, "I think I was born for a time such as this." And I think Delcino was born for a time such as this to help you in City Council. Thank you.
Thank you Connie.
The next speaker is Jay Burns. And then Don Horusley.
Hey Jay, how you doing?
I'm doing great. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. My name is Jay Burnes and I'm the general manager of a regional utility serving twenty cities and counties in eastern Virginia. I'm here today to voice my personal support for Ron Ripley, a proven leader. A few of you may remember that I served on the Planning Commission from two thousand and six to twenty thirteen. That's when I had the first opportunity to work with him on a number of key planning documents such as the comp plan and the strategic growth areas. One of the things you quickly learn about Ron is his incredible insight, vast experience, and community service focus. He's a very successful business. And one area I wanted to highlight is his financial expertise. As a former public sector CFO myself, I can attest to you that some of the complex financing deals that Ron has closed truly shows why his business is successful. His expertise would be incredibly valuable as a council member to ensure the city can remain financially sustainable as we embark on significant infrastructure funding to make our city more resilient. As busy as he is, he still made time over the last twenty years to be extensively involved on a number of commissions, committees, and groups, all to serve our community. He's a man of integrity and an experienced leader. I'm happy to support him in this very important role. Thank you.
Hey, thanks very much.
The next speaker is Don Horusley. After Mr. Horusley is Lisa Berry.
Hey Don, how you doing?
Mayor Diar, how are you today? Vice Mayor Wilson, appreciate the opportunity to be here and the members of council. I'm here today to endorse Ron Ripley to fill the seat vacated by the death of Mr. Louis Jones. Everybody's given Mr. Jones a lot of accolades today, but he's been around a long time. And Ron Ripley has supported Mr. Jones throughout his tenure on council. He was very supportive of his efforts and Mr. Jones was confided in Ron for a lot of things. I think Ron would be the ideal person to step into those shoes. And I've served with a lot of people. I've been, I've served the Planning Commission since nineteen eighty-six off and on for many years. And I've served with a lot of different people throughout those years. And Ron Ripley services to the top very quickly of the leadership abilities that has been bestowed upon me as being a City Council Planning Commission member. And I think that would happen here on City Council. I think Ron is a, not a talker. Ron is a listener. He listens things through and people have to say, "Ron, what do you think?" And when Ron voices his opinion, you know he's thought through it very well. And I've seen this happen many, many times on Planning Commission. So I just hope that you would give him serious consideration to fill the vacancy by Mr. Jones. I think Mr. Jones would rest easy where he is now, knowing Ron was in his seat. Thank you very much.
Thank you Don.
The next speaker is Lisa Berry. After Ms. Berry is Jeanne Evans Cox.
Good afternoon and welcome.
Good afternoon, thank you for having me, City Council. I've listened to a lot of really amazing resumes over the last fifty-eight minutes and they're impressive. I don't think any one of you could look at any one of them and say, or doubt their commitment to Virginia Beach, doubt their leadership ability, doubt their commitment to this community and the love that they will bring to the table here. However, what I haven't heard are some of the issues that I hear repeatedly that our community faces. And one of that is our continued challenge with regionalism. I hear a continued challenge with being able to work across party lines and being able to be a consensus decision-maker. I hear a continued issue with public-private partnerships. I'm the Sandler Center lady, so we have a success in that. And I see the other thing that we hear, and Connie Meyer spoke about this, was the divide that exists within this community. So when Ron Ripley told me that he was going to be here today, I volunteered to speak on his behalf. Over the last seven years, Ron Ripley has been that person. When I shut the Sandler Center down on March thirteenth, we had five thousand children coming through the following week and there was no guidance at that point in time. I called my board chair, Tony Nero, first. I called Ron second. He is the person that you go to in a crisis. He's also the person that you go to when you need to think ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road. At one point in time, I jokingly said to him, "What would it take if we were to buy the Sandler Center?" He figured it out. "Don't worry, we're not planning to buy the Sandler Center." But it's an amazing ability that he possesses and I think he would bring to your council thoughtfulness. I think he would be a great leader in a crisis. I also think he's the person that can plan and make great decisions as you look moving forward. And those issues that I mentioned at the beginning, he's your person. I think some of you know I have a very vocal and very outspoken board. Ron is that voice of quiet. He keeps everyone calm, he keeps everyone focused, and he keeps everyone working together. You don't join the Sandler Center Foundation Board to put your name on a building or to sit in a room and not do anything. Everybody works. And Ron is one of those most dedicated board members. I couldn't recommend him more highly. I couldn't recommend him more highly. I don't envy you your decision today, everybody sounds amazing, but Ron is awesome. So, thank you for the time, have a great day.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Jeanne Evans Cox. And after Ms. Evans Cox is Carl Wright.
Hello Jeanne, how are you?
Good afternoon Mayor, how are you today?
Good, thank you.
Good, those chairs look nice and comfy. This is great digs, by the way, guys. This is terrific, I am impressed, very impressed. Good afternoon Mayor, and Vice Mayor Wilson, and members of council. It's my pleasure to be here today to ask for your support for Ron Ripley for the unexpired term of Louis Jones. Louis's shoes are certainly big ones to fill, and no one can ever match what Louis contributed to this city. However, Ron Ripley, I think, will come very close. You know Ron's formal attributes, his boards, his commissions, everything that he's done, his experience certainly speaks for itself. Ron's a past president of the Central Business District Association. He's served on our executive board for over 25 years, and he's a Virginia Beach stakeholder. But I've known him for 30 years at least. Now, that's a very conservative number, because if I increase that number, that means I get older. So I'm going to keep it at 30. But he's a person of integrity, patience, kindness, just like Lisa said, and empathy. And he's a very good listener, a quality that's very important to a job like yours. He can step up, he can take his place beside you, and he can use his best judgment in every decision he makes. He cares about Virginia Beach, and you can be very, very proud of your decision to appoint him. I thank you for your consideration of Ron Ripley, and I must say, on a personal note, having seen firsthand all that you do from the inside in my political career, thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Carl Wright. And after Mr. Wright is Barbara Massner.
Okay, welcome Carl.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, city council. Mayor Dyer. I, I hadn't planned to come down here today, but a lot of folks didn't know that this was going on. We're sure the people that you guys have, the other two folks, are great people. But when I heard Delsino Miles was up for appointment, I had to come down. This is probably the seventh appointment that I've been to. Lot of them I've been disappointed in. But I want to, you know, Delsino, it speaks for itself. I think Mr. Miles, what he was saying, it speaks for itself, for itself. I mean, she's done so much in the city. I've worked with her, and I can tell you, seriously, she works across lines, Ms. Henry. She brings people together. Now she didn't, Delsino didn't reach out to call me, but, you know, I believe when people do good things, they should be recognized for it. And Delsino has been one of those folks that have given to this city, Mr. Bellucci. She has given, I mean, time and time again. I've been a volunteer in this city grassroots person, but Delsino is someone that is hard to keep up with. And, I mean, she's always been fair, she's firm, and she's on her facts. That's what I respect the most about her. She really is. And when it comes down to, to the vision that we have in this city, I don't see a better person to fit those shoes to bring this divide together than Delsino Miles. I know folks have their special interests, or folks that they're, you know, have their reasons for supporting, but let's do the right thing where we get people that have done something in this city to help everyone, to build bridges across the boards here in the city, all out in the Pongo area and western part of the city, all through the city. Let's do, do the right thing. She has, I mean, and I used to tell Delsino, you know, she's really, she's really tireless when it comes to working in communities. Because I was not an easy person for her to work with, but hey, she found a way to work with me. And when I knew her name, when I heard her name was coming up today, and I'm really surprised, and I want to say to some of the people that's out there, that she has helped throughout this city, this place should be packed. Because I know Delsino has built some bridges in some of the communities that some of your police department couldn't get in, and some of your other department, the business community, she works with them across the line. Democrats and Republicans, they, you know. And when I heard that she was up, I had to come down, and I hope the other folks that are listening, that she has helped. You know, I couldn't miss this opportunity to speak on behalf of Mr. Miles, because she has really done a lot, Mr. Mayor. A lot. Not one of those people that, those fly up, pop up when there's an opportunity to get in a chair, or there's a, there's a position that comes about. She's not one of those folks. She's actually got skin in the game, as they say. She's actually got skin in the game. She does the work. She listens, as, as the folks have said. And she's not afraid to go in certain communities and work with folks.
Thank you very much, Carl.
So, I hope you all will consider her very strongly. Thank you.
The next speaker is Barbara Massner. I did not see her. And then Hannah Sobel. And then Mayor, Mr. Mayor will then move to the WebEx speakers, we have two of those.
Okay. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Mayor Dyer, council, fellow community members, I'm Hannah Sobel, and I'm here as a resident of Bayside to express my heartfelt support for Charlotte Zito for city council. She possesses something rare, incredible smarts and awareness coupled with action and optimism. She's decisive, steady, and deeply caring for her community. When we think of the future of Virginia Beach, it's not for ourselves only, but for the generations that follow. 22% of our community is made up of citizens under the age of 18, and though they cannot vote, the selected body makes decisions that will impact them directly. Representation from a teacher, and more specifically, a mother of school-aged children, is essential in getting a better understanding of how we can serve that population, the future of our community. I love the ideas that she shared about safety around schools, and it's example of a problem that isn't easy to see unless you're the one experiencing it. As a mother myself, I know the difference between noticing the problem and having the energy to solve it. Ms. Zito has the energy. She's driven by a love of her family, a love of her students, and a deep love for her community. I've witnessed this love in her as an action word. I'd also like to underscore that she just, isn't just a teacher. She's a great teacher, but she's still open to learning. As she mentioned, and we've heard before, she's a voracious reader and has an open mind. Her ability to stay open yet be incredibly grounded is a quality I strive for and would be a strong addition to council in the vacancy left by Louis Jones. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, we'll move to the WebEx speakers now. The first speaker is Linda Bright. Ms. Bright, you are unmuted and may begin. Technical difficulty in new buildings.
Okay, we have a little delay here. How's everybody today? Ain't this a nice place? Yeah. And thank you all for coming out. I really, really appreciate it. Makes government great.
Good. I promise. Well. So Mayor, it appears that... Okay, Ms. Bright, if you could unmute yourself, if you, if you are muted. We have unmuted the room, so we should be able to hear you. It's not coming through the room. Mayor, there's a technical issue, it's not coming, the sound's not coming through the room. We, we only had two WebEx speakers.
Okay.
I'm, I don't, I'm sorry. It worked perfectly during testing.
Okay, so we're unable to accommodate?
We are, yes sir.
Can we put a phone up to the mic?
I don't have our phone numbers, they are, they've, on WebEx.
Okay, you know, regretfully, we apologize to the two WebEx speakers, but, you know, we certainly heard some very, very nice input from, you know, people, and obviously, it underscores the significant talent that we have that we're going to be talking about. So thank you all.
Mr. Mayor, if, if you wouldn't mind, let's try the second WebEx speaker, just to see if, if that works. Mr. Uday?
Let's see what we can do.
Mr. Uday, if you could go ahead and begin, you are unmuted.
Hello, can you all hear me?
Yes sir, we can. Please proceed.
Wonderful. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, and Vice Mayor, and distinguished council members. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you and to show support and recommend my good friend and colleague Charlotte Zito to the vacant seat of Bayside District. I am Uday Kama-Metu, a civil engineer by profession and resident of Ridgely Manor, which is located in the Bayside District. I have known Mrs. Zito for over five years, ever since we both joined the Community Advisory Board of WHRO in 2017. I have grown much closer and then worked much closer to her while I was the chair for the Community Advisory Board over the last two years, during the COVID years, which very much within us, which is part of the reason why I could not come in front of you today, because I contracted it and now I'm positive. That's unfortunately the reason why I could not be there and support my friend. While she volunteered as the vice chair of the Community Advisory Board, I was the chair. It is in this capacity, I have got to know Ms. Zito to be an empathetic leader, and she is an inspirational leader, and then she is always asking difficult questions and then not shying away from asking challenging conversations. She does have the ability to learn new things very swiftly. And most importantly, Mr. Mayor, and then all the council members, I would like to remind you all that we certainly could use a millennial on the council, and Ms. Zito would represent that community. She is an educator, and she is not only an educator for high school students, she's an educator for all, all ages and groups. She's a grassroots leader. If you were to observe all the people today who came in support of Ms. Zito, it is across the entire citizenry that represents our great city of Virginia Beach. She is an empowering and an empathetic leader, and it is not the quantity of the experience, it is the quality of the experience and the passion with which Charlotte will fill the shoes of Mr. Late, Louis Jones, that I would like to recommend her candidacy for the seat of Bayside. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Linda Bright, you are unmuted and may begin.
Mayor Bobby Dyer, Mayor Rosemary Wilson, and all of our city council members, it is with great, great honor and respect that I speak to you regarding Ms. Delsino Miles. She is seeking the past seat of our honorable Louis Jones, former vice mayor. Ms. Meyers has worked many years throughout our city, supporting community initiatives, sitting on so many boards, and she works tirelessly. You all that know Delsino know, you wonder where in the world she get all this energy from, she doesn't stop. And you know what I've learned over the years, is she does it quietly. Delsino will do stuff and you'll hear about it next year sometime, because she's one of those people, she don't need you to pat her on her back. She does what she does in this city and throughout the Hampton Roads area, because she loves the city of Virginia Beach. And Ms. Meyers has worked, like I said, many years. She also has a very outstanding business, Miles Agency, and she is currently an adjunct professor at Regent University. Delsina, I tell you, if you guys ever looked at her bio, there are some things I said, my goodness, I've never heard of, and she, and she has done them. Done them. To our listening audience, please review her bio, if you haven't had a chance to look at it. It speaks volumes for who she is as a leader, and her successful career, how it has, she has done beautiful, and her love for our city, as I said. She is a communicator. She's always upfront collaborating, with all involved in making major decisions. She has created committees and boards to address the needs of our city. Ms. Meyers also sits on the Tidewater Community College Financial Board. She is highly, highly recognized for her hard work throughout the Hampton Roads area. So I really would encourage you to take a look and think that this is the best appointment. She is a grand person and well-respected. I would like to thank our Mayor, Dr. Bobby Dyer, our Vice Mayor, Rosemary Wilson, and city council members for the honor to say Ms. Delsina Miles would be a grand individual to serve in our former mayor's position, vice mayor's position, and councilman, the late Louis Jones seat. Thank you sincerely for listening to my recommendations. Like you, I love this city, and Ms. Miles is a champion. With the highest regards, Linda Garris Bright, Commissioner.
Thank you. Most appreciated. We were able to accommodate everyone.
Yes sir, that's all the speakers.
Okay, great, and thank you very much. And once again, thank you to everybody. You know, I tell you, we are indeed blessed with some great choices. Okay, at this point, we're going to move on to council discussions and initiatives and comments. Anyone on the right, Lynn would?
Yes, thank you Mayor. So, Councilmember Holcomb and myself were tasked with being liaisons for security issues at the Judicial Center.
You got your mic on.
Sorry. Councilmember Holcomb and I were tasked with looking into the security issues at the Judicial Center, and we put a letter in your packet along with a handout, and we were hoping that this issue could be presented to council next week and voted on. Time is of the essence of this matter, and if anyone has any questions, we're here to answer them, but I think we, we put it all in the packet, and hopefully the council will accommodate that request. And I didn't know if Councilmember Holcomb wanted to add anything to that.
Okay. Right, anyone else? You know, Mr. Moss, and then Mr. Rouse.
Well, three items. On that item, I have posed a number of questions to the city manager, which she's working on, so I can hopefully have those all and digest that before the vote on the 16th. I know we haven't gotten to the legislative package, and we haven't had those types of discussions, but, a little bit behind on that, but there are two items that I will be having and have discussed before, but just wanted to highlight again. One, so that we could, as we go into our new district system, that we replace this process with special elections, and we let the people decide who represents them rather than us. I think it's time that we move past this less than more constitutionally republic process, and use the same process that we use in the General Assembly, the State Senate, and the US House of Representatives for special elections to fill vacated seats. And secondly, to ask for an amendment to the statute, state applies to all localities the option that would allow localities to repeal the one and a half cent tax on food that would line up with the state eliminating the state one-cent sales tax on food starting January 1st. Obviously, we can't make that, it'll probably be the next budget year, but I think that's a very regressive tax, and I think we have the same overperformance revenues as the Commonwealth has had, and if the Commonwealth can reduce one cent, I think we can reduce one and a half. I just wanted to make sure, so people will know that out, and I'm going to share those again in your packet on Friday, so you'll have a chance to look. So you'll have a chance to look at that. And I assume we'll be seeing soon a timeline for the approval of the legislative package. And those are my three items. Thank you.
Good. Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. After finding out about a conversation with the majority of city council members, to which myself, Councilmember Wooton, and Councilman Tower were left out of, discussing a very important topic of voting, particularly the results of the Holloway case, a case where two black Americans challenged the merits of our election system, a case where a federal judge in court stated, and I quote, "The court concludes that the history of racial discrimination has had a disproportionate impact on the education, employment, economic, and social conditions of the minority community," end quote. That was Federal Judge Jackson ruled in favor of the plaintiffs. City council decided to appeal. The Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals vacated Judge Jackson's ruling stating that it was deemed moot because the state law on at-large voting changed. That was House Bill 2198 in the Voting Rights Act. So my question is, why would the mayor and vice mayor contact the majority of city council members discussing something so vitally important to our city without the input of the only two racial minorities on city council? I mean, the last time I checked, we are a city council, city manager, former government. The last time I checked, myself and other two council members left out of the conversation are elected members of this body. Elected members that represent thousands of constituents from a very diverse city. So as my duty and responsibility of my office, I had to inform the public. I had to inform the public and call an emergency meeting to talk about voting rights and the new election system within our city. So this moment, I want to thank Pastor E. Ray Cox, the founding pastor of New Hope Baptist Church, for opening his church for a community meeting. I want to thank Dr. Prudential from the local branch of the NAACP for coming out to speak. I want to thank Dr. Allen and the Virginia Beach Interdenominational Ministers Conference. I want to thank my fellow colleague, Councilmember Wooton, for also being there to speak. And I want to thank city attorney Chris Boyne for condensing an hour and a half, maybe two hours worth of information within 45 minutes. Most of all, I want to thank over the 100 and plus citizens that came to the meeting last night to get informed on the very important voting system in our community. It was a great meeting, and I'm really inspired by all that came out. Voting in our city is not just an elite issue for the elite. Voting in our issue is the right of every single person in this room, every single person that resides in our city, and every single American in this country. Voting is the most important thing we can do. And to provide access to the ballot box is one of most sacred duties and responsibilities of this office. So with that, I yield my time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Rouse. Now, Mr. Moss.
If I could have my nickel back. I did want to mention that I am meeting with the city manager and Mr. Hanson of Public Works Department. I'm sure many of you people have been hearing about our lakes across the city. Some of them are estuary lakes, some of them are burrow pits. But sedimentation, loss of water volume, loss of habitat, and we really don't have a good digital understanding of our lakes. And there is, from my past occupational life, there are some really inexpensive today technology, both multi-beam, that can do much more quickly digitize surface bottoms of lakes. And there's also sensors that will give you, to relatively pretty good depth, give you stratification, sedimentation, so you can go back and see what was the bottom of the lake before the sedimentation started. And I think this is going to be an important understanding, a scientific understanding, to make sure that we get the true performance out of our stormwater system. We have to really understand the degradation that's taken place in reducing not where the water is relative to space, but the depth of the water and the volume that we're able to stay. And as that water shallows, it heats up, you get a different ecosystem. And the lake no longer performs like it used to perform when the people bought their property. So I'm having a meeting with the city manager just so they can get an understanding of how these lakes are performing and their health and making sure that they do perform like we say they're going to perform under a storm situation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moss. Mr. Belugi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to take a chance. I know we're about to move into agenda review, but I'd like to talk about a specific item that's on the agenda for this evening. And that's the resolution to declare August 31, 2022 as International Overdose Awareness Day in concert with the international recognition that it will occur, including with the Commonwealth of Virginia. I was asked to introduce this resolution by citizens who have been impacted by accidental overdose and their families. And I wanted to, I know I shared this by email with the council, but I want to just take a moment for those who are watching to talk about the resolution and why I believe it's important. Substance use, addiction, and overdoses affect many families. And many individuals and families suffer in silence as a result of this epidemic. And one of the best ways that we can address this issue is by raising awareness about it so that we reduce the stigma associated with addiction, with mental illness, with substance use, and also the shame and stigma that associates, that's associated historically with accidental overdoses. And I think that if we can raise awareness about these issues, if we're able to do that in concert with the outstanding mental health services, which we know we are still in need of more, we'll be able to reduce the incidence of accidental overdose. So the resolution that we'll be voting on tonight, and I hope that members of this body will approve it, will recognize officially August 31 as an International Overdose Awareness Day. It's directed to illuminate the convention center as well as the Emergency Communication Services Building in purple, which is the color that this group has identified as their symbol. And it will also lower the city flags on August 31 to half mast in honor of those who lost their lives due to accidental overdose. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. Anyone else to the right? Sabrina?
Thank you. Just want to follow up on Councilmember Rouse's comments that he made. Certainly, a very important matter to bring up. These are things that impact our community and constituents. These things happen behind closed doors, but people don't know until you bring attention to them. So I thank him for bringing that matter to the forefront. Else, most people wouldn't know what really happened. Disappointing, to say the least, to learn of such a conversation. But I think it's important that we discuss it, look at it, learn from it, and don't repeat those type of practices. Also like to make sure that I inform the body that this evening during a public hearing, I will have to leave for a professional business commitment that I have to attend. And so I will not be able to stay for the duration of the meeting sadly. But I just want to make sure that my colleagues know my commitment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Madam Vice Mayor, if we can go into the city council agenda review.
Yes. Madam Clerk, are there items that need to be pulled?
J. 3, sir. I mean, ma'am, sorry, J. 3.
J. 3.
J. 3.
Okay, anything else?
No, ma'am. That's all.
Okay. Under J., number one, ordinances and resolutions. The ordinance to amend City Code Section 10-1 to recreate eight new precincts, rename precincts, and relocate three polling locations and authorize maintenance upon precinct lines to conform with recent district boundary changes, and request a waiver to administer a split precinct. Number?
Yeah, John?
One point there. I would just, city managers, I know this is what they needed to start putting out their letters and pushing out their notifications. But it would be great that they would make sure they notify all the public when the precinct maps are available. I know they've been holding that up until this took place. Thank you.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Councilmembers, when speaking, can you just make sure you're speaking into the microphones so they can hear in TV land and in the audience? Thank you. Is everybody okay with this? Mr. Tower?
Thank you. Madam Vice Chair, I just wanted to note that I have a signed declaration regarding my former law firm's representation of the applicant in this matter on file with the city clerk.
Sir, are you abstaining?
I am not abstaining.
Oh, you're not abstaining?
Yeah, but I have a letter on file.
Sure, you, okay. Everybody else okay? Barbara?
Just regarding the issue about the precincts, this is pretty enormous. And I think particularly changing the names of the precincts is going to be very confusing to a lot of people. Some of these, you know, have been for many decades. And I'm not sure what the plan is for educating, I don't mean to say educating, but providing the information to the public that's going to get the attention that it needs to get. Because this is going to be extremely confusing, I think. I'm not sure why some of these precinct names had to be changed. I would like to see some explanation for it. But this is pretty overwhelming.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mr. City Manager, I know the register's office handles that. Is there a way to possibly our communications office can make sure or work in tandem with them to get that information out when it becomes available about the new precinct names?
Mr. Rouse, we're doing that already.
Okay, great.
So I think council is either part of this current budget or right before the budget was adopted, they adopted some kind of funding source for us to assist with getting some communications out to enhance the public's information knowledge about the system change. I'll touch base with them to see if there's any additional funding needs that we have and if there's anything else that we can do to address your concerns and also the concerns raised by Mrs. Henley as well. In addition, prior to council going on recess, they asked staff to put together a plan for assisting with getting more information on, in particular also about the naming of the new current, the new districts that we're moving towards. So we haven't finished that work yet. And it'll be something we bring to council for is further review and consideration sometime in September or October.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Moss?
What I understood was that if your precinct changed its location or if it was a split precinct, that under the Voting Rights Act, other things, that people have to receive a written notification from the voter registrar. So I think that's going to be, a lot of people are going to get those direct letters because a lot of the places changed. And I think there's 22 split precincts. The real issue is going to be if it didn't change location, but they replaced the name with a digit, which is what they've done. I think that's going to be the confusing piece. But if they changed the place where you vote or if it's a split precinct, you will get a, I think it's a postcard is what they send nowadays. But you will get written notification.
Okay. So maybe we put this on consent. Okay. Number two, the resolution and observation regarding International Overdose Awareness Day requested by Councilmember Belucci. Consent, please. Number three is going to be heard. Number four is the ordinance to amend City Code Section 27-66 regarding designation of city highways for golf cart operation and posting of signs. Consent. Number five is the ordinance to amend City Code Section 18-108.2 regarding license code for mobile food vending. Number six, the ordinance to extend the date to satisfy the conditions regarding closing a portion of 18th Street between Pacific and Arctic avenues.
And Vice Chair, I just would point out, this is the item that triggered my last one as well about the...
Your law firm?
My law firm, yeah.
Yeah, but you can vote.
I will.
I just have one comment on that if I could. Because when you read this, you'll notice under item three on the discussion page, it talks about the traffic impact study and the site distance analysis, that that approval will be within staff, and I'm fine with that. But I just hope that before that final approval, since traffic's been a big issue with those neighborhoods, that there would just be some kind of communication with them so they won't think that, oh, no one told us or we got caught by surprise. I'm not looking for it to come back to us. I just want to make sure the neighborhood knows. Thank you.
And number seven, it's ordinance to authorize temporary encroachments into a portion of city-owned property known as Black Duck Inlet and a five-foot public utility endangerment easement at the rear of the 321 Back Bay Crescent regarding removing and replacing a boat lift and four 18-foot wood piles, a wood pier, and wood bulkhead. Any problems? Number eight is the ordinance to appropriate $240,878.08 to the Ocean Park Volunteer Fire and Rescue Unit regarding an interest-free loan to purchase two replacement ambulances. Number nine is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $1,930,000 from the Virginia Tourism Corporation to the FY 2022-23 Convention and Visitors Bureau operating budget regarding marketing efforts. Number 10 is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $221,642 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Development Services to the FY 2022-23 Department of Human Services operating budget regarding permanent supportive housing program. Number 11 is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $58,750 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Development Services to the FY 2022-23 Department of Human Services operating budget regarding support staff retention for substance and mental health programs. Number 12 is the ordinance to transfer $100,000 from the General Fund Reserve for contingencies to the Department of Cultural Affairs regarding the support of the 531 memorial design stipends and additional facilitation services, including a memorial liaison to families and survivors.
Open a public hearing, I'm planning.
Number one is the Atlantic Development Association, LLC, with WPL Ventures LLC for variance to Section 4.4B of the subdivision regulation regarding subdivision two lots at 11173rd Street, District 6. I think that's...
Vice Mayor Wilson?
That's been withdrawn.
So the applicant has agreed to an indefinite deferral on that issue. We formed a committee selected by the Civic League to look at all of these issues and hopefully come up with some additional options for redevelopment in that area. And that is ongoing. And all parties agreed that an indefinite deferral would be, give them an opportunity to come up with the best product.
Thank you, Mr. Branch.
And there is a letter from the attorney that we have.
Number two, SXCW Properties 2, LLC, tract number 8, LLC, for conditional rezoning from Ag. 2 Agriculture District to conditional B. 2 Business District and a conditional use permit regarding car wash facilities at the southwest corner of Sandbridge Road in Fisher Arch, east of 1973 Sandbridge Road, District 2, formerly 7. President Sanders Henley?
Are there any speakers or have we received anything in opposition? I know there was one letter from the church. I would just say that this just doesn't rise to the level of requiring them to put in a stoplight. And so, you know, that just, I think, was their issue. So I would have it on the consent agenda if there are no other opposition points.
Henley, I don't have any speakers signed up. I can't speak to if there's letters in opposition.
So, number three, Hunter's Mill Apartments, LLC. Hunter's Mill Apartments, LLC and Lattberg Square, LLC for conditional rezoning from A. 12 Apartment District to B. 2 Community Business District to conditional A. 12 Apartment District at 397 Brixton Drive, parcel west of 5444 Virginia Beach Boulevard and triangular parcel between the Brixton Drive and 500 Aylesbury Drive, District 4, District 2 Kempsville. Mr. Holcomb?
I've heard no opposition. I'm pretty concerned.
Number four, Catherine Ann Olivas and Catherine Olivas... Number four, Catherine Ann Olivas and Catherine Olivas and Jessica M. Gowan for conditional use permit regarding the family daycare home at 2717 Inglewood Lane, District 2, formerly District 1 Centerville. You can place that on consent. Number five, Glorious Grooming LLC, Joda H. Goodman Estate for conditional use permit regarding home occupation at 140 South Gum Avenue, District 4, formerly District 5 Lynnhaven. Mr. Branch? Number six, Thomas Mark Goldsberry for conditional use permit regarding home occupation at 1140 Tree Fern Place, District 5, formerly Beach District 6. Mr. Tower, I haven't heard anything of you.
No, I have not. I have no objection.
Okay. Number seven, Robleski Art LLC, Oceana Partners LLC for conditional use permit regarding tattoo parlor at 1329 Oceana Boulevard, Suite 10, District 5, formerly District 6 Beach. I haven't heard anything, Mr. Tower.
No objection.
Number eight, 365 Tattooing LLC, Little Neck Towers LLC for conditional use permit regarding a tattoo parlor at 3500 Virginia Beach Boulevard, Suite 610, District 8, formerly District 5 Lynnhaven. Mr. Branch?
Approval.
Last but not least, number nine, US Surf Company Inc., Sensational Realty LLC for alternative compliance outdoor recreation facility and coordinating, reoccurring, excuse me, outdoor special events at 2017 Arctic Avenue at 317 20th Street, District 6, formerly District 6 Beach. I guess, Mr. Branch and Mr. Tower?
No objection here. No objection.
Okay, that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you very much, Rose, Mayor. Okay, at this point, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from the open meeting allowed by Section 2.237 11A Code of Virginia as amended for the following purposes. Public contract, discussions of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, and discussions of terms or scope as such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237 11A 29, Atlantic Park Project. Public held property discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237 11A 3, District 6, formerly Beach District. Legal matters, consultation with legal counsel, and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to the actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiated or litigating posture of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237 11A 7, and that would be Holloway et al. versus the City of Virginia Beach. Legal matters, consultation with the city council employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such council pursuant to Section 2.237 11A 8A. City voting system, personnel matters, discussion, considerations, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.237 11A 1. Council appointments, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. And number two, Bayside City Council vacancy. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
All right, and the vote is open. I guess this is our, okay. Boy, this is like one of those menus at Buffalo Wings.
Okay, we got our picture.
Mine hasn't come up.
Ms. Henley isn't, hers isn't coming up.
Houston, I think we have a problem.
Mine didn't come up.
Mr. Moss, I have your vote. So if you're the mover or the secondary, automatically votes puts in the vote.
Yes.
Make a motion or second. She says we're already voting. Yes.
Okay. The vote's recorded.
So Ms. Henley is the only one that we're waiting for.
Thank you for your patience. This is our first vote.
I didn't do it. May your vote of 10 to 0 with Ms. Henley's verbal yes vote, you've recessed into closed session.
Okay, thank you. We are recessed into executive.